We're ready here to reconvene. We were in recess for a few moments. And on our agenda today is David Willard and Dan Durey from our Economic Development Council Commission. You are to -- are you on? Or would you like to take the lead here?
Well, I think that Felicia would like to.
Felicia, I'm sorry. Excuse me, Felicia.
It's fine.
I think the three of us could.
I would sit your way in the back.
Well, you see, we're not used to.
We're front so we can see.
Is this how we're doing this?
Yeah. We ask for it then approach the.
Why don't you. This is our.
You can have all your meetings in here as well?
I don't know.
When we can get it.
If we can, yeah. But it's brighter.
But it's not going to be quite like this. We're going to rearrange it again.
We'll rearrange it.
I feel like I'm sitting at.
You want to move, yeah. It might be better.
You want to sit in the front row.
No.
Well, it will be. Do you want those passed out?
Yeah, let's pass those out.
We sent a press release out that discussed the new precedent that the Cape Cod Economic Development Council set in their recent meeting. They voted to dedicate $350,000 from the Cape Cod License Plate Fund to support the implementation of Regent's new Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, commonly known as SEDs. And obviously, that vote was a recommendation to you, the county commissioners, to approve. We have read the details on that. Dan was involved. David was involved. Almost everybody was involved in the SEDs. Wendy and the Chamber were strongly involved. We had support from the greater community. So basically, we're here to present that recommendation to you and ask for your support in your vote in doing so.
And the reason we're so excited to be here to do this is that, yes, the EDC was involved in the strategizing of the SEDs process and was involved in the five working groups. And it was such a wonderful process. We've been involved in two other SEDs processes. But I would have to say that this is the first year I've really been energized to be confident and believe that this isn't going to wind up on the shelf. This is the real deal when you get 55 community leaders in the working group. And Wendy was the leader of one working group. And when you have business leaders, environmental leaders, folks who really know about the Cape, understand what we need. And this is what this process was about. And when they come to consensus, like Wendy's group came to this wonderful consensus that here we are surrounded by water and there's not many places you can go except for Bill Zama's establishments and eat on the water. And don't we need coastal development? Well, who better to do it than planners, professional planners, like people in the Cape Cod Commission? And this is what the $350,000 that we're recommending you folks approve. And this was an unanimous EDC vote that this money goes to the Commission to expand their economic development capacity so that all 15 towns can utilize these funds. Just to give you an example, you know, $350,000 might sound like a big figure. Well, we've had what we call the Red PP program. And it's an acronym that stands for something that I forget. However, it was basically an RFP that went out to all the towns. It's a three-year, we were offering a three-year, $75,000 commitment to these towns for a particular project that they needed, that they needed help with, that would promote economic development, which would create economic development. And ultimately, we had four towns that successfully completed the RFP and got it back to us. And we started the three-year process. So that's $225,000 a year that was helping four towns. It makes more, far more imminent sense to us if we could spend $350,000 to help 15 towns. And lately, the EDC has been inundated with applications from towns. The Economic Development Council has been having a lot of applications from towns who have, for instance, pieces of land that they would like to develop economic development. They don't have the expertise, the planning, the technical assistance to do this. So they come to the EDC and say, would you give us $75,000 or $100,000 for a consultant? And we started down that path, but we really believe that, given this $350,000 a year to expand the capacity of the Commission to be able to provide technical expertise to all 15 towns to help them expand and identify and develop their growth centers, for instance, which is a wonderful idea for all the Cape. We feel that this is going to, this $350,000 is going to be the glue that's going to motivate and sustain this effort to get to where we need to go. And that's why the SEDs process, again, with the Commission and the Cape Cod Economic Development Council, has been such a wonderful process since here and has led to our unanimous recognition of the $350,000 a year.
For three years.
For three years.
Thank you. I was going to ask for how long is the door open?
Yes, this, I see this, and I think my colleagues do. This is an investment in economic development in the Cape. And it will, I think, for the first time, really delineate how we see economic development. We see that the county's role is to provide the infrastructure that then the private sector takes over to develop and thrive. And we see that this investment of $350,000 a year for three years is the best way to accomplish this.
I will make a comment here. In going through this process and listening, you know, I was at the first SEDs and then hearing the results of that process, the first, the Phase One and Phase Two and the findings, it is really very exciting. I think you're correct in that it identifies the large infrastructure issues. And there is much more bang, bang for your buck that can be achieved by going this way. Pat has served on the EDC for a number of years prior to becoming Commissioner. And I thought that when we were before the local chambers, you summed it up very nicely about how the EDC seems as though it's gone through an evolution of its strategies and attempts. And I thought that Pat articulated that very well.
I could say it again?
Well, I mean, basically, the different programs that you had, you know, you had a small grant program, and then you tried the larger grant with some small grants. And, you know, it wasn't really, you could see where larger pieces had more of an effect but for fewer towns.
Yeah, I think what I really said, too, was how the EDC has evolved in terms of meeting the needs of the Cape. That when we first started it and first received the license plate money back in '98, that the small grant program was conceived. And then it moved on from there to the large grant program and then the Red P project, Red PV projects, and so forth. And this is just another evolution into not only coming up with a way to be proactive in economic development, but also to collaborate and to utilize the skills and abilities and knowledge of the Cape Cod Commission staff and the team that is going to help make this happen. So I think it's probably one of the most exciting things the EDC has done since it became a spinoff, if you will, or part of a county. I think, what is the role of the EDC in this?
Yes, that's what I was going to ask. It's a very good question.
Yeah, because obviously, and maybe Paul should come talk about the reset team, but where does the EDC fit into the implementation and the collaboration on the effort of the SEDs?
Yeah, maybe this is the time for Paul to talk about how he sees the Commission's role.
Well, or how you decided to collaborate together. Maybe you should, if you'd like to come up on and join the group, hold up a chair. Give us a.
And incidentally, Dan Wolf, who's over at the EDC, is joining.
And he probably has. John Kilroy's here also.
Yes.
Jeanne would like to say a few things.
Yeah. Well, I would say it's been an honor to work with the EDC. And we've developed a close working relationship over the last year and a half or so. And we're all faced in this current economic situation with doing more with less. And so the question is, on the county level, how do you do that? And I think you do that by more closer, by closer working relationships with the existing entities. And how do you move things forward? You have to make sure everyone understands their role and responsibility and nobody's stepping on anybody's toes. And I think what we've decided is that we are at the intersection of land use planning and economic development. Those aren't competing ideals. In fact, they're very complementary. And so we've made that huge step forward by sort of putting those together. And in doing that, I think we have a focus on infrastructure. And I think we understand that the EDC has a tremendous board there with a lot of talent and a lot of real brain power. On the Commission's side, what we have is some abilities sort of on the operation and maintenance side, implementation. And so I think what the EDC's role will now emerge in working more closely with the Commission and the regional policy plan and developing economic development strategies that result in planning document and are funneled down through regulatory issues on the Commission's side. So they will have a much greater role in debating some of these larger policy issues and not just be a grant program anymore. And so I think that's a big step forward for them. And again, it's collaboration. On the Commission's side, we just want to do the work. We want to get out there. We want to work with the individual towns in these newly defined economic centers that are part of these land use vision maps. And we have these 16 priority projects and a bunch of ancillary projects that are listed in the SEDs document that we're very proud of. And we want to get the money and get to work on some of these priority strategies. And the EDC really was the strategic planning committee of the SEDs process. Although the SEDs document is a document of the Cape Cod Commission, we went to the EDC upfront and said, we want you to be our strategic planning committee. And they embraced that role. And we've been able to work together very well and pretty closely on that issue going forward. They are going to remain that. SEDs implementation piece is going to be an annual revisitation. So the EDC as a strategic planning committee for SEDs implementation is going to be there to give guidance. So that we, we want measures that are quantifiable so that we can see where we are in our progress and so that we can be held accountable for the work that we're doing. And I think that the EDC board will do that. And there'll still be enough money left for a grant program. And so I still think they'll do a lot of what they've done in the past, only probably in a little bit of a different format. And now they're going to be plugged in, I believe, as sort of the brain power behind county economic development, where the Cape Cod Commission will now build the capacity to be the muscle to implement that. Again, the land use planning, economic development, a focus on infrastructure, and working in conjunction with the Cape Cod Chamber, who we've worked very closely with over the last two years, too. And, you know, they have a job and their role and responsibility is clearly defined there. And I think they need us to help build capacity in the towns, to get the infrastructure in place, to streamline regulation so that the economy can take care of itself, so that it can revive itself. And I think what we're dealing with is a situation with the economy on Cape Cod. You know, this tension between seasonal economy and year-round economy. And we're dealing with 20 years of history that has put us in the position that we're at in now. And the economic crisis has brought a lot more people to the table to talk about how we're going to share resources in order to get this done. And so there's an opportunity to hear. But we're not going to turn this around in a year or two years or three years. But we can turn it around and we can get to be the Cape Cod that we all envision. But if we don't start now, we're never going to get there.
Paul is right that we would continue on with the grants program. It might be revised, given the capacity. But also, to me, one of the exciting things about the whole SEDs process was not just getting the product out the door, which will be the end of this month, but it's these working groups, like the one that Wendy chaired, were all in agreement, as is the Business Roundtable of the APCC, who populated some of these working group committees. We're going to keep convening them. That'll be our role at the Economic Development Council, to convene them from time to time, to have updates from the county, the Commission, how are these specific projects that they've identified, how's it coming? And to keep the cauldron of ideas bubbling, which is really what happened at this SEDs process.
I just want to recognize Bill Zama and Wendy Northcross are here also. And I'm assuming that this process has the support of not only the Business Roundtable and the APCC, but the Chamber, the Cape Cod Chamber as well, with your presence here and involvement.
Thank you. I think if you'd come back any couple of years ago, this program would have ran out of the room. But I think now, I think there's a tremendous amount of trust that Paul has built up. And that trust in the Commission and what they're about to do makes a lot of sense to the business people. As Mary Pat knows, I've been involved with a number of EDXEs on the Cape, helped start the one in Mashpee and moved to the one in Bourne. And we've worked to help the Falmouth group. And we were looking for places to put businesses, a regional technology development corporation, which I somehow happen to chair, which was started by Holland Halverson. We have a number of companies looking now to move to the Cape. We have businesses moving off of, out of the Houli and Woods Hole, the transfer of intellectual property. And we've received over a million dollars in funding, which we're trying to use the best we can. And we're using it quickly, I hate to say that. But we're now hired, they're now hired by Woods Hole and MBL as their agents are being paid by them. They're trying to have a money commitment and they need places to go. And I'm going to involve Paul at the Business Roundtable in seeing that this business mapping, et cetera, it just makes so much sense to make business easier. So yes, I would think we would, it's a good use of the money.
It's not a lot of money, Jim. It sounds like a lot, but it really isn't. If it can be leveraged with other sources, which the Commission has the capacity to choose, you know, other sources, that would be important. But $350,000 may sound to some like a pile, but given what the projects are and the scope, it's good seed money. We really need to be aggressive. And we do, you know, we do plan on being as collaborative as possible because there is a lot of work. The SEDs document was a really important plan. It's like you can, once you have that plan and you have that vision and you know how to get to the end of the goal. And I think that was a great process. We were happy to participate and just interested to see. I think Cape Cod has a long way to go yet to overcome this aura that you can't do anything business-wise on Cape Cod. And, you know, like you said, 20 years of history, we have some refraining to do. And I think this is a big step towards doing that.
Yesterday, at, number one, I just want to mention, before I go to that, that, you know, we're just in the process of updating and revising and looking at our strategic plan. And prior, and even now, economic development on the Cape was one of our main priorities. So this is very exciting for us to see as it's being rolled out. And it's also a level of, you know, there's been a lot of collaboration between our departments on the county level. And this is really unprecedented at this level. And I think it's a bold move on, I was saying brave as well earlier, but, and Wendy had called it a robust program yesterday. And I think that's the effort, I thought that was a great way to describe it. I also just wanted to mention that David DiAgostino, when Leslie was rolling out the process up to date of how this has gone out, he was saying that a lot of people think that the Cape Cod Commission was anti-economic development. But we all know that now that it really is pro-economic development and it's there to help. So I thought that was a great compliment that you've been able to change that in people's minds, or at least those who are watching and paying close attention. So that's good. Yeah, well, for some. I'm sure there's a few more of you that you'll have to reach out to. So congratulations on that.
Just don't screw up.
Yeah. Now is. Thanks for the vote of pardon.
Well, I think the other thing that this whole project shows, as far as the Commission is concerned, how adaptable it is, that it can take a report like this to become involved in the process as the Commission was involved, and then adapt its own resources to be able to help carry this forward. So it isn't just mired in bylaws and rules and regulations. It is really an agency that can adapt, I wouldn't say easily, but with a lot of facility in terms of meeting the needs. So that's.
Well, that's the greatest compliment and the greatest hope. You know, especially in these times, we see so many governmental entities that are just frozen by fear. Don't want to move forward, don't want to move back, just cutting, 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 and not adapting, not evolving, not sort of revisiting who they are at their core and what services they provide and how efficiently they can do that. And I think the county in general has really done a lot of that over the last year or so that I've witnessed. And, you know, that's why I think in these trying times, we are able to do more with less and start bold programs.
Bill, you want to discuss?
Yeah, I think it's important for the public to know that the Cape Cod Commission Act mentions economic development 13 times.
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Who does counting?
Well, I think that's, I think that's an important point because the original intention of the Cape Cod Commission Act was to transfer from CC-PETSI the combination of land use development and economics. And with the, with the fact that we're using the capacity of the Cape Cod Commission to apply the license plate money overall, let's say, over a broader spectrum, I think is very, very important. We have, you know, we have had a grant program for some time. I think that it just looks, has the appearance for the public and for us, that we're actually organizing this to have the greatest effect overall. There is the collaboration issue that we've, you know, that we've all seen with the presence of the Cape, of the Cape Cod Chamber of Commerce. I know that there's interest from the other chambers of commerce as well, let's say, to participate and make sure that we all move this forward. But I would take exception to Wendy saying that this is not a climate for business because after all, how many members do you have? And certainly, you've been doing a great job.
Well, there's perception and reality. And as we all know, sometimes the perception is very, very wrong. The reality is we have 100,000 people in the workforce. We have very successful year-round businesses. But because we do have a very healthy visitor economy, people see that and they say, oh, this is only seasonal business. Well, you know that's not true, otherwise we wouldn't be here. So, but I think that our opportunity going forward, the future, is to say to people, this is a great place for entrepreneurs. This is a great place to come and live and raise your family and start a business. We can help you. We've got places to do it. We've got resources to make that happen. And I think we're all kind of getting on the same page with that tune. And that's a message that's got to get over across the bridges, you know. I think that's part of our role is to be the marketing arm and to say, here's your opportunity. And that's what's going to help retain families here. It's going to hopefully get new families moving here, bring their kids and raise your kids here. But I think the other thing that's really exciting about this is it really advances this whole issue of regionalization. We know that our future is going to be on sharing these resources. And we can't be fighting about it. We have to be working together. So good example, you know, lead by example, and here it is. And I think that that's encouraging to us because that's what's going to keep this place affordable. And that's what's going to.
And finally, I think the underlying thought process for me was, this is the best use of the money. There is no better use of this money than to foster what we're talking about.
Fritter it away.
Versus the little things don't work. This will work in some capacity. The town has enough money to do what it needs to do.
And somewhere mentioned earlier the word leverage. And that's always been a very key word for the EDC in terms of granting grants, if you will, or awarding grants, is that we wanted those applicants to be able to leverage the money that they were going to receive from the EDC, from other sources. And Wendy says the $350,000 isn't a lot. And you're right, it isn't for what we need to accomplish. But it will leverage a lot more money. And so hopefully, with the, with the way this program is laid out, and particularly because SEDs is a project that has to be delivered to the feds and approved by the feds, and it allows us as a region to be able to access federal funds because we have done a good job with this. So there is some leveraging out there, and that's important to help make it happen.
If I can just add on to that, the other thing that I like coming from the outer Cape is that there were people, everybody was involved all the way through, from all regions. And I think that sometimes people in the outer Cape feel that most of the weight goes to the larger towns and to where there is a larger population and where this can make more of a difference. And now I think that everyone is feeling part of, part of the game. You might want to talk about how this is a federal requirement a little bit, just since we can, it uses some education.
The SEDs document, it stands for the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. And we revisit this every five years and then we send the plan to the feds and they certify it. And then it makes any project that's included in that plan eligible for Federal Economic Development Agency funding opportunities, which are matching grants for some of the priority projects that have been identified, as well as other projects. So we've got important projects in Bourne and Falmouth and Barnstable that may be, that may qualify for EDA funds.
As well as down in Provincetown and.
Yeah, no, all 15 were involved. And I just, in the last 12 months, the Commission's been able to produce two major documents and a new regional policy plan that's been completely reformatted and the SEDs document too. But the most important aspect of both of those efforts has been the public process that was the underpinning of each of them and the consensus building along that. And in every, in each of those opportunities, it's produced a better document.
Leslie was very clear yesterday in making, Leslie Richardson was the Economic Development Officer, it was very clear yesterday in a presentation that the SEDs started with the RPP left off. So that there was continuity and connectivity among the documents that we're producing. I think that this is a, is something that, while not a precedent, is something that has been intended for some time. And the fact that it's being delivered is something that's very important.
Right. And in another room.
Are we going to measure this now?
Yes. Well, do you know that yet?
We've already, we've already got working on how we're going to set up a framework for our, taking the priority projects and prioritizing, deciding which ones we're going to do in year one, year two, year three, how that's going to spin out, and how we're going to rank those and measure those efforts. So within a very short period of time, we will have, working with the EDC, a matrix in place to measure our progress in implementing the SEDs document.
Paul, when will we hear from the feds about the quality of the document or any potential?
I think we'll probably hear fairly quickly. Usually, we hear by August. And they usually come back requesting some changes. But I have a feeling that we're going to hear pretty quickly. And I'd be surprised if there are many changes that they want to see made because this is a very different and much more participatory document and process.
Yeah. And additionally, the federal EDA has become a more robust program with a stimulus package. So they've got a lot of money that they want us to put out there. And we've had several projects, one in particular in Bourne, that have tried to access EDA money. But because we didn't have certified SEDs, they were told to wait. So hopefully, they won't wait too long. It'll be a matter of months now and we can resubmit.
Yes.
I just see if Paul or maybe Dave talk about the reset team and who's on it and what their role is and how they operate.
Yeah, well, that's sort of the internal team at the Commission that we're going to put together, which is intended to be more than just Leslie, which has been the economic development component of the Cape Cod Commission for so long. And to put with that a group of people that can work tactically with towns, especially in the further into the regional policy plan, the land use vision maps, working in these economic centers. economic centers. And so the first place we will go will be Yon, to pick up where the Cecil Group will be leaving off within thirty days or so. They were funded through a grant that was, again, a, which is $50,000 from the EDC and $25,000 from the Cape Cod Commission. And we're looking to get into a Phase Two GITS. So we'll have existing commission staff and probably a couple of new people that will bring some data and IT experience. We'll be able to provide the administrative overhead to that and some of the economic development expertise. We have Leslie now, we also have Elizabeth Hughes, who's come to us from Harwich, who has some significant economic development experience, especially arts and culture. So we will have that team, a core team of three or four people at the commission, that will be the reset team. And then we've already had internal discussions at the commission as how we're going to work on this, which would be in project teams. So there will be those, that team, that reset team will be amplified by planning staff, transportation staff, wastewater staff, and GIS staff, to put together targeted teams to work with towns in a three to six-month period in a particular area of geography that's been identified for economic growth.
And reset is an acronym for
Regional
Regional Economic Strategy Executing.
Yes.
Better than Red Pee Pee.
You have the accent on the wall.
I don't think so.
Well, I think before we go too far, I really think we owe you a huge thank you for your vision and for your collaborative efforts in making this happen, and for being just so smart to make it happen. So we owe you a great big thank you.
I would like to make a motion, then, that we form the recommendation of the Cape Cod Economic Development Council that we vote to approve using license plate grant funds to support the regional economic, technical assistance and comprehensive economic development strategy, SEDS plan implementation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Done.
And we thank you.
Thank you.
And as I said in the memo that I sent out to the rest of the Cape Cod Economic Development Council yesterday, that I really see this going forward as the Cape Cod Chamber, the Cape Cod Commission, and the Cape Cod Economic Development Council moving forward arm in arm. And that's how I see it. Congratulations for making this happen.
Right. No, I think it's great. And so are you going to have a plan now to maybe do a road show as far as rolling this out to towns and
We're hoping, towns and the media, we've set up already, we have two media appointments with, in Falmouth and down in Orleans, and we'll look for more opportunities. And we would, we talked yesterday about going, getting our team together and going to towns to selectmen meetings or whatever the best venue would be to
Or maybe we could get some of them to pull together and
Regionalize.
Yes, we could have, you know, some regions meet together and
Well, the good thing about getting into the towns and not just using a central regional headquarters is that we could have Cape residents there who could ask us questions, which would be wonderful.
That would be wonderful. Well, this is exciting. And Leslie, I want to thank you as well. You've done a lot of, a lot of great work. You and Dan Gray have spearheaded this SEDS effort, and you've done a great job. And I think the room was duly impressed yesterday with that presentation, and I thought you did a great job. So congratulations, Dan, and congratulations, Leslie. And good luck, and we'll, we can't wait to get our updates as to how it's all going.
We'll be back next week.
Yeah. That's terrific. Thank you.
Thank you.
So when is, so when are your, when are your appointments?
Falmouth is, I was going to talk to Bill, because he said he might be able to make it, go up next two, half a year.
Being like an editorial board?
Felicia, thank you. I know it was, it was all rushed here, but you did, it was crazy.
You might, might go to get
Very good points made all along the way. And we didn't get Dan to chime in there, damn lucky. It's great for him to be Well, he's been, yeah, he's been on the road during the sales strike.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Thanks for being here.
Well, you just witnessed that, and that was the best part, I guess. All right, thanks, Phil.